Good evening. This regular meeting of November 11th, 2019 of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Mr. Barton?
Here.
Ms. Bradley?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Prohaska?
Here.
Ms. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Sancy?
Here.
Ms. Whitman?
Here.
This evening, we have students from Sageville Elementary School who will come forward. Introduce yourselves and lead us in the pledge.
Hi, my name is Mackenzie Ossela. I'm in fifth grade.
Hi, I'm Abby Yelshmit and I'm in fifth grade.
Hi, I'm Emma Sarzen and I'm in fifth grade.
Hi, I'm Olivia Braebock and I'm in fifth grade.
I move the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. I move the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on October 14th and the strategic plan update session on October 28th, 2019, as submitted.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on October 14th and the strategic plan update session on October 28th, 2019, as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And we will have an overview of a sale of a 2,000 Chevy Step Van.
Good evening, everybody. Buildings and Grounds posted a 2,000 Chevy van on the GovDeal website that we use every couple of months. And the recent sale, you have a bid of $5,000 from a gentleman in Massachusetts. Since it was $5,000, that requires a public hearing and board action for you to approve that sale. Buildings and Grounds does recommend that sale pending your public hearing and your decision.
Thank you. I move the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the proposed sale of the 2,000 Chevrolet Step Van and authorize payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the proposed sale of a 2,000 Chevrolet Step Van and authorize payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Anybody wishing to come forth and speak upon that can do so.
That's what it's going to be used for, I understand.
So I move the Board of Education approve the sale of the 2,000 Chevrolet Step Van to Zack's Ice Cream in the amount of $5,000.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the sale of a 2,000 Chevrolet Step Van to Zack's Ice Cream in the amount of $5,000. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And I believe we have some board salutes out there. Ms. Whitman?
I'll take the first one. I was at the state cross-country meet. It was awesome. We had a lot of success in the Dubuque schools. So the board would like to salute goes to the boys and girls cross-country teams at both Hempstead High School and Senior High School. Both Senior and Hempstead girls cross-country teams qualified for state with Senior placing second overall and Hempstead placing seventh overall. In individual Class 4A competition, Seniors Lillian Schmidt took third place, Seniors Claire Edmondson took seventh place, and Hempstead's Hyanna Brown took 11th. Both Lillian and Claire were also named Class 4A Elite All-State, placing in the top 15 of all 500 runners across the classes. And in the boys competition, Seniors Connor Kilgore qualified as an individual and placed 37th at state. The Hempstead boys team placed third in the state as a team, their third year in a row for placing in the top three. Individually, in Class 4A, Hempstead's students Ryan Winger placed sixth, Owen Maloney placed eighth, and Mason Suarez placed 11th. All of these student athletes were also named to the Class 4A Boys Elite All-State, also placing in the top 15 of all 500 runners across the classes. So once again, congratulations to our cross-country teams for both Senior and Hempstead High School.
Thank you.
I have a board salute. A board salute goes out to the entire cast and crews of the outstanding theater productions at our high schools over the past few weekends. Dubuque Senior High School presented Big Fish two weeks ago. And this past weekend Hempstead High School presented Clue. I happened to attend both of those and they were terrific performances. The directors did a great job. I'd like to recognize the directors for the senior musical, Erin Dean, Anthony Geisens, and Megan Schumacher. And for the Hempstead play Clue, I'd like to recognize Katie Rippey and Heather Conan. Both productions, as I said, were extremely well done. We know it takes a lot of effort to be onstage and as well as offstage to make these shows come to life. Kudos to all involved, especially to the teachers, as I mentioned, the directors, who guide the creative process and the students who bring their energy, dedication, and passion to these productions. So our theater arts are alive and well in our school district.
Great, thank you.
I've got one.
Yes.
A board salute and more importantly, a thank you goes to the voters of the community who overwhelmingly passed the revenue purpose statement last week with 83% voting yes. This passage will allow the district to access funds available through the save tax extension, one cent sales tax, used for infrastructure and technology projects. The fund has been instrumental to enhancements in the district. We take good stewardship of these dollars very seriously. We know that that's important to the taxpayer. Thank you to the voters for their trust in this process and the positive impact it has had and will continue to have in our district.
Well said. I have an additional, literally a board salute out to all of our veterans and their families. We know that our freedoms and our rights are very precious in this country and we respect all the veterans and their families for all their efforts to make that possible.
And the special one sitting right to my right.
Special one right here. Thank you, Stan.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, any other board salutes? Okay, thank you. I move the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And visitors can come forward or regulars.
Good evening. How's everybody tonight?
We're good.
I'm so excited because tonight our spotlight on schools is Dubuque Senior High School, class of 84. Not that I like it better than the other high school, but I do. Sorry. So we have Kelly and Carolyn here from Senior and they're going to share with you some great things that are happening there.
Senior is my favorite, too. Okay, so she told us to talk about stuff you may not be aware of, but I find that hard to do because we like to brag at Senior about what we're doing, but I'm going to give it a shot. So we've been working pretty hard these last several years to implement MTSS into our building. And one of the big things we did this year is transition to a 10-period school day from our typical seven, eight period. Yeah, so we've gone through quite a few changes. One of the ways that we are using that to our advantage is we've incorporated approximately a 30-minute support time that allows students, all students, time to get intervention, reteaching, things that they may need to be successful, which of course would align with our school goal of a 95% graduation rate. The thing that I particularly want to brag about is Mondays is our advisory time. So students would go to the same teacher every Monday, that is their advisory teacher. That advisory teacher will be with them their four years while they're at Senior. And that advisory teacher will work with them on a lot of different things. We work with them on academic behaviors, which we call RAM requirements. We work with them on social behaviors, which are RAM core values and the behaviors that look like that. And we also work with them, obviously, with just prioritizing and time management as then they have the accountability piece to decide where they are going to go during that support time Tuesday through Friday. So yeah, so that's kind of an exciting thing that we're doing this year and it's working perfectly. Just kidding, it's not, but it's getting there. And we know that to get better, we have to, obviously, sometimes struggle. But it's going really well and we're very excited about it. The big thing, too, is that this year in alignment with MTSS is we put together a guiding coalition, which is just kind of a different look at what a building leadership team is. And Carolyn Fisher's going to talk to you about that.
Can you say what MTSS is?
Oh, multi-tiered system of supports. My apologies.
All right, so the guiding coalition is a 12-member board essentially within Senior High School. It's made up of voices from throughout the building, so it's not just the content leaders or the instructional coaches. There's a representative from every single department so that we're hearing voices and that our vision is encompassed throughout the entire building. We met for two days of training with Megan Eelsinger from the AEA at the end of the summer and we plan on going to Madison next month to attend the RTI MTSS conference there to better understand and have more confidence with what we're doing within our roles. For the past, since school started, we've been meeting twice a month. We have a kind of a scope of teams and task forces throughout the building that we make connections with. And the purpose is to get data and collect that data to really make our students successful. So as a goal, our guiding coalition is to guide our house so that all students are ready for success at the next level, whatever that might be.
Awesome.
And what's the RTI?
Response to intervention.
Only two acronyms is pretty good.
I know. I was just making sure it didn't change.
We know MTSS and RTI. You've told us what they stand for. Can you sort of talk about the concept? It's a big umbrella. A lot of things fall under it in all of our schools. Talk about what that's after, would you?
All right, so essentially what we're trying to do with it, and it's a mandate, obviously, in the younger grades, so we wanted to incorporate it in to the high school because it's going to be a very focused, systematic way of intervening on students that are not being successful. And so like I said, with us as advisory teachers, we have a group, we try to keep the group very small that we work with, so approximately 17-ish, if not less, that we can really build a relationship, focus on, you know, where are they being successful, what specific interventions might they need in what particular content area, and then hone in, like I said, on a plan, a progress plan to get them to success. So that's a little version.
It really helps ensure that every student has an adult advocate in the building relationship.
It does.
It's awesome.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the board can come forward.
I move that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Is there any board member wishing to have any items removed? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Is there any board member wishing to have any items removed? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, Mr. Barton, facilities and support services.
All right, we have a handful of motions to go through and some comments from Mr. Kelleher, too, in the middle of all this, so I'll go ahead and dig in. I move that the Board of Education approve change order number six to Ports and Construction Incorporated on the Alta Vista Alternative Learning Center Edition renovation project in the decreased amount of $1,700.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number six to Ports and Construction, Inc., on the Alta Vista Alternative Learning Center Edition renovation project in the decreased amount of $1,700. Is there any discussion?
Always good when it goes down.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve final acceptance of the Alta Vista Alternative Learning Center Edition renovation project in the decreased amount of $1,700. Is there any discussion? Always good when it goes down.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve final acceptance of the Alta Vista Alternative Learning Center Edition renovation project and authorize payment of final project costs to Ports and Construction Incorporated in the amount of $48,300 in accordance with the requirements of Iowa law and as more fully outlined in the submitted authorizing resolution.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve final acceptance of the Alta Vista Alternative Learning Center Edition renovation project and authorize payment of the final project cost to Ports and Construction Incorporated in the amount of $48,300 in accordance with the requirements of Iowa law and as more fully outlined in the submitted authorizing resolution. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution offering for sale by public bid Stage Right Z800 Coral and Band risers and set the date, time, and place for possible public hearing as December 9th, 2019, at 5:30 PM at the Dubuque Community School District.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the resolution offering for sale by public bid Stage Right Z800 Coral and Band risers and set the date, time, and place for possible public hearing as December 9th, 2019, at 5:30 PM at the Dubuque Community School District. Is there any discussion?
Similar to the van situation, it's just a formal process we go through to be able to effectively liquidate these items.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
And Mr. Kelleher is going to speak a little bit about a few items here that were on the agenda that he's going to cover.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Ryan Gann. Friday afternoon, we received an email from the Department of Education asking us to delay our spending authority requests for the items that relate to certified enrollment. They were the open enrollment out, the increased enrollment, and the LEP. We talked about those at our subcommittee meeting. The state was unable to finish their final approvals of all of those changes made between the time the district certified and the normal November 1st deadline. They're still working on those, so they asked us not to make those requests until those numbers have been finalized. So we'll bring those requests back to you at the December meeting.
We don't anticipate any changes. It's just a matter of the state getting caught up with the certification.
Correct. We don't expect any...
Do they ever let us not meet the deadline?
Well, that's a different question.
So we'll table those three motions.
We don't need a motion to table, do we, Joanie? No, okay. Okay, next motion then. I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution directing the sale of approximately $10 million school infrastructure sales service and use tax revenue refunding bonds, Series 2019.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the resolution directing the sale of approximately $10 million in school infrastructure sales services and use revenue refunding bonds, Series 2019. For discussion, Mr. Oswald, come on up and tell us what we're talking about.
So you have a summary of the bids that we received in front of you and I thought I would walk through the summary first. Let's start with the end, however. This is a refinancing and you refinance debt typically because you can lower the interest rate on the debt today versus the interest rate we're paying on the bonds we issued previously. In this case, the bonds previously issued were in 2012 and 2013. The end result is a savings after transactional cost of about $300,000 spread over the next nine budget years, 21 through 29. It's not $30,000 a year. It's kind of a lumpy schedule, but it's about $300,000 spread over that period of time. So that's the end result. And that's what you set out when you first talked about this back in August. That's what you were set out to accomplish. With that in mind, the results of the bids are in and the bids were received last week on Thursday. And what you'll see is a recommendation. And our recommendation is that we accept the bid from BB&amp;T Bank, which is out of North Carolina, with an interest rate of 2%. BB&amp;T has done a number of save issues. We have no concerns about their ability to perform. I recognize it's not a household name in Dubuque, Iowa, however. But I did want to point out the next bid. For a second, I want to explain why we're not recommending the next bid. So the next bid is from US Bank and the bid, they offered two options. One is an interest rate of 1.98, so slightly lower interest rate, but the bond cannot be prepaid ahead of time, or what we call in our industry, we call that a call feature. Can't be prepaid early. Or their second option was a call feature in 2024. That interest rate was 2.1. The bid package that was sent to all the banks that considered said that the bond had to be prepayable no later than 2024. Could be prepayable earlier than that, but it had to be, couldn't be any later than that. And so when I, and sometimes banks give us bids that are inconsistent with the terms and, you know, we don't get terribly agitated by it, but in this case, and actually the third bidder also gave us a bid that had a no prepayment option tied to it, but its rate was higher than the first bidder, so it was irrelevant. The only one that's lower in this case is the US Bank bid without a prepayment option. And so the only reason I feel like you need to be aware of it is because it had a lower interest rate than the one we're recommending. Let me pause there before I go into why do we recommend... Everybody understand what we're talking about? Any questions? We typically push for a prepayment option or a call feature. There are a variety of factors that come into that, but most commonly, if you choose not to have a call feature, you give up some potential flexibility were you to need to restructure or reissue debt. In this case, had we in 2012 not had a call feature, we wouldn't be able to take advantage of the lower interest rates that are available today and refinance for savings. So number one, we typically push for a call feature. In your case, we're, some of the modeling that we've done as you think about the save into the future and the revenue purpose election from the other day, some of the modeling we've built out, depending on how fast and how much, does require us to have to refinance some of the debt to stretch the payments out a little bit in order to afford the new debt. Does that make sense? If that were the case and we had a non-callable, non-refinanceable issue, we might find ourselves, in your case, the board finds itself not able to pursue the projects on the timeline it wanted because the bonds would be hindering you from being able to issue the debt the way you want it. So it's for those primary reasons that we typically push for a call feature. I would say, and a benefit of having a call feature is this whole discussion we're having. Rates go down, we refinance. You have refinanced, I think, almost all of the issues that I've worked with the district on originally. Maybe that means I'm bad, who knows? But for the most part, you've gotten to each of those issues when the call features came by. This is the first one where, 2012 issues, the first one where the call feature came and we sat on it. We've been sitting on this one for over a year because the rates were so low in 2012 that there was not really savings justifying the process. Rates came down here this fall and the savings opportunity presented itself. So our recommendation would be to accept the low bid with acknowledging US Bank's efforts and thanking them for their efforts, but accepting the bid from BB&amp;T. And I guess I want to make sure that you had the opportunity to ask any questions you might have.
What is our current rate of interest on the bond?
Two and three-quarters-ish range.
So we're going from two and three-quarter to two.
Correct.
I am not Mr. Finance at all, but I, we've basically done business based upon your recommendations and it kind of indicates, sir, that the lowest interest is not just the only factor to consider when we're looking at this situation.
Think so, yes. I should tangent for a second. If this were a construction bid and somebody gave you a bid that was inconsistent with the terms, you would discard that bid. This is not that. You are not required by law to take the lowest, not irresponsible, but alternate proposal. That being said, I feel, I felt like you needed to be aware that it was presented. Normally, we would say, look, you know, if you're considering accepting the low bid, we ought to go back to the other bidders and let them have an opportunity to bid the same way. Because they all bid exactly the way we asked them to, except one, except two banks. I'm not angry at those two banks. I just don't feel like it, were we to, can think that's what we want to do, I do think we would owe it to the other banks to give them the opportunity to bid the same way.
A pretty specific, maybe even aggressive, 10-year facility plan, and so flexibility will be a key in making that a reality. So I think the siding with the flexibility, the callability, the opportunity when it arises to do things like save $300,000 is important for us.
And I should point out, we did calculate, the difference between the two bids is $9,000 in savings. So 300 to 309. It's not a huge number either way.
Do you want to talk about historically, we've never, we've always had the callable option.
Yeah.
All the previous...
I don't remember us not having, even going back to the old Dubuque County tax, I think we've always retained the right and option. And I think most of the time, we have actually exercised that option early. Remind you, it's your option. The bondholders can't make you call. It's a one-way agreement.
What is the duration of this? Is it the life of the bond for which this is guaranteed?
Correct, correct. This rate is set for the life of the issue.
And we have until July 2024 to refinance again if we want to?
After July of '24.
After that, okay.
For the five years it would remain.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded on this. All those in favor, oh, we need a roll call vote, please. Mr. Barton?
Aye.
Ms. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Prohaska?
Aye.
Ms. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Sancy?
Aye.
Ms. Whitman?
Aye.
And that carries. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing the redemption of outstanding school infrastructure sales service and use tax revenue bonds, Series 2012, dated May 1, 2012, and authorizing the redemption of outstanding school infrastructure sales service and use tax revenue bonds, Series 2013, dated June 3, 2013, of the Dubuque Community School District, and directing notice be given.
Second.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing the redemption of outstanding school infrastructure sales, services, and use tax revenue bonds, Series 2012, dated May 1, 2012, and authorizing the redemption of outstanding school infrastructure sales, services, and use tax revenue bonds, Series 2013, dated June 3, 2013, of the Dubuque Community School District, and directing notice be given. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Ms. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Prohaska?
Aye.
Ms. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Sancy?
Aye.
Ms. Whitman?
Aye.
Mr. Barton?
Aye.
And that motion carries. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Barton?
That's it.
All right. That takes us to ed programs. Mr.?
Yep. So our ed program meeting, we had three updates that align with our strategic plan. The first one, we had... The first one, we had David Muller, who stopped in to talk about apprentice welding program that we're trying to create. I believe this would be the second in the state. We're targeting sixth grade through twelfth grade, and this is just an opportunity for kids who feel like they have an interest in welding, that would actually be kind of like a roadmap, sharing the specific courses that this student should take, aligning also with an internship program. Then we have Mark Burns, who stopped in, and he talked about specifically an initiative that we're focusing on where students will have more choice to their education. So if I'm a student and I want to be a doctor, well, what are the specific courses do I need to take that aligns also with the core so that I can maximize my four years in high school? So this will also be an opportunity for students really to decide, well, if I want to be a doctor, here's what I need to do, but if I want to change it by my junior year, there's also flexibility where we're still making sure that that child maximized their four years in, in high school. So there's still going to be some discussion on what that would look like to make sure that some of the courses are not being impacted by students' choice, but ultimately, we want students to have an opportunity to make the decision that's best for them, and we would also make sure that the parents and community members would also have access to kind of this roadmap so that they can help the, the child, because we truly believe that it does take a community to help out. Then we had our superintendent who shared about ACT, and we know that the students in, in our district who take the ACT, they are doing outstanding. And so what we would love to see is more students who are on the track of graduating by their junior and senior year also take the ACT if they feel that that's best for them. But if I'm a student who feels like, hey, I'm going to a two-year college and I want to get connected to NICC, we want to make sure that that student have an opportunity to do that, or the military. So really, we're trying to provide a whole bunch of choices for students to really maximize their four years while they're in high school, and really wrapping around a whole bunch of support system around them. We also recognize that there's a lot of students who are not taking the ACT for various reasons, so what are the barriers and what can we do to remove those barriers and really target our efforts to help them if they need those helps? And then we reviewed some policies.
Summed it up very well. Thank you. All right, that takes us to new business, please.
I move the Board of Education authorize the Board Secretary to cast ballots for Keystone, AEA Board of Directors, Ann Seamer, and District Eight, and George Holland for District Nine.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education authorize the Board Secretary to cast ballots for Keystone, AEA Board of Directors, Ann Seamer for District Eight, and George Holland for District Nine. Is there any discussion?
Just a comment, I serve on the Keystone AEA Board as well, and these are two really fine people who are willing to step into that role. Mr. Holland is, is in a continuing, in continuing service on the board, and Ms. Seamer is willing to step in and represent District Eight following nineteen years of Walt Pregler's, Walt Pregler's work as a Board of Director serving District Eight. So we appreciate Ann's willingness to come forward and represent District Eight. So I strongly support both of these, these folks.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to students number eight zero four two four zero, number eight zero zero five zero four, and number eight zero seven six three three at this time.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to students number eight zero four two four zero, number eight zero zero five zero four, and number eight zero seven six three three at this time. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Are there any board member or administrative issues?
No administrative issues tonight.
All right.
Mr. Barton's last meeting, I suppose?
No, he has one more. He has one more.
That one will be a split meeting where there's the outgoing and the.
That would be the organizational meeting.
I'll save my infinite.
Oh, no. I will go down in history as the only guy to serve four and one-sixteenth terms on the school board. It's just like the gift that doesn't stop giving. I thought I was done in September when I signed up four years ago, and I'm still here. After two months. You get overtime, okay? Overtime, okay, yeah. It's a time and a half. My union guy's here, Derek Dear, he's keeping an eye on this whole thing. I asked him to come out to make sure everything's on the up and up.
All right, if there's nothing else, we are adjourned.